Peace world, what's good? It's Y King Live, Africa Town Media Studios at the Black Dirt Underground. We're in the building today with a special guest. Uh, Martin Luther King County Councilman-elect, Girmay Zahili.
Almost, you got it right, bro.
Brother Zahili.
You got, oh, that time you got it, you got it. Yep, we're good.
Yeah, Councilman Zahili.
Man, Councilman-elect.
Welcome, man. Um, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I appreciate y'all creating this platform. Let's get to work.
Yeah, I mean, I like that, uh, that, 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 that spirit. Let's get to work, you know, the work now begins. But you've been, you know, grinding it out for like, what, the last year?
Man, it's a long campaign season.
Yeah, yeah, the marathon continues, right?
Yes, sir.
But, um, man, it's good, you know, I'm glad you was able to, uh, you were able to, you know, make some time this, this fresh after, you know, I don't even think the ballot is officially.
Nope, not official yet.
You know, stamped yet, you know, but we know the, 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 the numbers is, uh, is running up in your favor right now.
Yes, sir.
But, um, just to, to make, you know, time to come into the, to the underground, right, to the, you know, the grassroots and really connect and talk to the people. And so, um, you know, a lot of people may not know this is, you know, one of, one of our own, C D, South End grown, you know, Bailey Gatz, you know? He didn't get to go to Garfield, but he was close enough, you know what I mean?
Come on, man, don't do that.
But he's here to work for all of us right now, so we, we appreciate it.
Franklin Quakers, y'all know what it's about, Quaker Nation.
Um, y'all get it, I hope y'all can get a football team back. We rooting for y'all, you know what I'm saying? But nah, nah, it's all good. But, um, nah, we gonna, you know, get into some, some real things, but first and foremost, we gotta say congratulations, man.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You, you, you did it.
We did it.
Yeah.
We did it.
There you go.
We did it.
How does it feel?
It feels amazing, man, to get to represent the community where I was raised. Like you said, I grew up in the South End, went to Franklin, grew up in places like Holly Park, Ranger Vista, Skyway. And so getting to shape policies, the impact, the communities that raised me is just a blessing. I'm excited.
Man, a lot of, a lot of people, you know, in, in, in my generation, you know, a little bit above with, I guess, what they say, X and, and millennials, you know, uh, you know, which I think is you, right? Um, are detached, you know, from politics, you know, for, for many different reasons, whether it's corruption, or, you know, it don't matter, the, they, you know, the, they own it, you know, whatever the case may be. Um, and some maybe even be, you know, intimidated. What, what motivated you, you know, a young brother, just thirty-two years, I think, right?
Yep, thirty-two.
Um, to, to take this step? And what has it been like?
Yeah, for me, what motivated me is just how I grew up. I grew up in public housing. I grew up to a single mom who's been working double shift as a nursing assistant my whole life. And no matter how many night shifts she worked, no matter how many days a week, she still couldn't afford basic things like rent and medical expenses and childcare. And so, understanding the responsibility that I have to take the sacrifices she made to make positive change in my community is, is my primary driver. Um, and what really motivated me is a few years ago, she got injured at work and is now unable to work because of her knees, they're just blown out. Um, and so just to know somebody can work that much and still end up not being able to provide for their family is something that's near and dear to me. And that's the story of thousands of people in District Two. You know this very well, working on keeping people from being gentrified and displaced. People are, it's not like people are lazy, it's just the system is not set up for them.
Hmm, that's real, that's real. And just, you know, for those who may not know, um, you, you are now the, uh, uh, King County Council, uh, person-elect for District Two in Martin Luther King County. And for some people that, that may not know, what are, what is the geographic geography of District Two?
Yes, a little bit confusing because there's a city council District Two and there's a King County Council District Two. District Two City Council is just basically the South End. King County District Two goes from the top of U-Dub all the way to the bottom of Skyway. And then the east-west boundaries are I-5 and Lake Washington. So you can think of this long, narrow corridor from U-Dub down to Skyway. So those are the boundaries. Really diverse district.
Significant area. And, and what are the, what are the demographics of the, of the, of the district?
Yeah, we got, it's fifty point one percent white, uh, twelve point nine percent black, twenty-two percent white, I mean, uh, Asian-American. And then you got a bunch of smaller groups in there. Uh, and then economically, the average income in this district is around seventy-something thousand. But that, that average doesn't tell the full story, right?
We're gonna get into those numbers, but you see, you know, he's, he's on, he's coming in on top of his, 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 his numbers. Um, and, and what does the county council, uh, have jurisdiction over? You know, what, what type of decisions that, that do they make that affect, you know, our lives?
Yeah, I, I would almost say that whatever you care about, we have some nexus to it, right? So the only thing that we can't do is land use and zoning within the city of Seattle. That's city council. So if you're talking about upzoning, if you're ta- talking about changing or, uh, how, uh, you know, single-family zoning things, uh, that's city council. But we have that jurisdiction over unincorporated King County like Skyway. But if you're talking about criminal justice, criminal legal system, uh, King County Council has its hand over the county jails, the county sheriff's office, the courts. Uh, if we're talking about environmental justice, King County has its hand over the parks, um, the waterways, the sewer systems. Um, if we're getting to the election system, King, uh, our voting system is held at the King County level. Um, and then King County has its own housing authority too, King County Housing Authority. Um, and then lastly, the big area is public transportation. So all of Metro goes through King County. And then two King County council members get to sit on the sound transit board, so light rail can be influenced by King County too.
So what, what's the size of the, the, the bag that's being distributed? What's the budget of the county that, cause the county council?
Yes, sir.
Votes on the, on the budget, right?
Yep.
Of who gets what and who doesn't get what and, you know, where the money goes.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what politi-, you know, we say politics is decision-making?
Yep.
And those decisions are about the distribution of resources.
Absolutely.
You know, who gets what and who doesn't. So what, what is that, um, what is the budget of the county? What does that look like?
The biannual budget, which means two years, is about eleven billion dollars. So it's a big, it's a big budget. Uh, much of that is already, um, accounted for by the state. They say you have to spend this on this and that. Uh, but then there's a discretionary budget as well that's a few billion dollars. So, uh, there's money to work with. Um, the big issue that we talked about earlier is that the way King County raises money is through regressive taxation. So it gets tricky when you wanna fund certain programs, but the only way you can get money is by property taxes, sales taxes. So we gotta get creative about how we get revenue, and I got some ideas for that.
Oh, man, that's, 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 that's important. And as the, uh, you know, uh, coming into the, to the, to the council, um, and I know you probably shared some of this on your, uh, campaign, uh, trail. But, uh, what are your, you know, top priorities? You know, what's, what do they call that, like the first hundred days or something like that? You know, what, what's, what's on the top of your list of things that, 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 that you wanna, uh, attack, you know?
It's gotta be housing first, man. We, I mean, you know this very well. If you want the well-being of a community, it begins with having people housed and having somewhere stable to live. Because that's the place, that, that's the foundation that you build on for everything else. Education, criminal legal, uh, public health, it all begins with housing first. So there are surplus county land sites all over the county that various agencies own, and they're just sitting unused. So I wanna make those sites public and build public pressure for those agencies to release that land to community organizations like Africa Town that have been doing really good work. So that's number one. Number two, we have to work together to understand what resources are available. We talked about this earlier, but, um, there are so many service providers and resources all around King County. But there isn't a lot of dialogue and relationship within those service providers. So if we can hold some kind of summit within the first hundred days of all the people who influence public health, all the people who do youth programs, all the people who work on housing equity. And we have them in a room and meet one another, so that if somebody from South King County comes up to an organization and says, "I need help with this." But that organization doesn't do that thing, they can say, "Well, I don't do that, but I know I have a relationship with X, Y, and Z person who does that." So everybody can act as a referral service for one another, and I think that creates a lot of efficiency for our resources.
Uh, definitely, definitely. I mean, I think rallying the people, I mean, cause, you know, the power still exists in the people, you know?
Absolutely.
Um, but, you know, your, your district, you know, you said from the U-Dub down to Skyway, you know, that really covers, you know, what has been the historic black community. You know, the central district for over a hundred and forty years, uh, or almost a hundred and forty years, down to the areas where, um, a lot of our community is now being, you know, displaced to in, in, in the South King County. Um, so I think, you, you know, bringing the people together to address some of those issues. Um, but within that, you know, and you just touched on this when you were, you were talking about the, the average, the median income, there's a great disparity.
Oh, man, talk about it.
Um, and so, you know, some of the stats that recently come out about, you know, the, in Seattle, uh, the, the median household income for whites being a hundred and five thousand. And, uh, for blacks being forty-two thousand, you know, five hundred. What are, you know, the, the roots of that?
Mm-hmm.
You know, because we can't just treat the symptoms, right? We gotta kinda get in the root. And what are some of your thoughts about, you know, how to, uh, bring more equity? Equitable participation in the economics of this, this region?
Yeah, that's a big question, and it's the question of our times. That has a lot to do with the gentrification that we were talking about. We're not able to build wealth if we can't own. And people have been redlined, economically redlined, pushed out, there's no social cohesion. People are getting pushed away from their jobs, there aren't enough high-paying jobs. Uh, we can talk about our education system and whether we're education, are educating our kids properly for the new economy that we're getting into. We can talk about our criminal legal system and how that creates generations of poverty. So there is a lot to go into that, but at the end of the day, we are not the progressive city that we pretend to be. That stat is all you need to know. Cause you, if, if you pretend that this city is this woke, progressive city where, uh, racial equity is prioritized, no, it's not.
In conversation, though.
In conversation.
I think what I, what I've seen is that a lot of times, uh, one is just great, you know, publications and marketing to the world. But two, I think some people are drinking even just locally, you know, the Kool-Aid, like, and they begin to think that, you know, talking about the problem is solving the problem.
Yep.
Because a lot of these things have been being discussed for the last forty, you know, fifty years.
Absolutely.
We look at this stat, you know, today, and really with this stat is basically saying, and what we, what we see happening is ethnic cleansing of the city.
Yep.
And really apartheid economic circumstances, you know, and, 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 and so the path forward, you know? What do you, what do you see as, you know, as a, as a path forward so that, you know, we know the resources are here?
Right.
We know that, you know, these companies are bringing some of the smartest people on the planet Earth here to help solve the problems in their companies.
Yep.
So the, the, the mental resource here, but the political will. What are some of the, the, the specific solutions that you, you know, you think political will needs to be around?
Yeah.
Built around?
To your point, there is no one candidate who is going to make all the changes that they talk about. It's their ability to rally their community, inspire others to action, uh, to make the changes that we are talking about. So concretely, for me, it's expanding political access to marginalized communities. So we have to lean into media and social media, just the way you're doing here, to raise awareness about what's happening. You know, if we wanna take control of our destiny, that begins with information dissemination, and it begins with bringing government to the people. So we need way more, uh, access to media. We need to bring government to the people. So I wanna have regularly scheduled office hours at community hubs like Af- Africa Town. I wanna collect people's email addresses every single place we go and phone numbers, and physically email people and call people. Anytime a decision is about to take place to make sure that, uh, a community is at the table and making the decision and leading in its own destiny, um, as, as these things happen. And finally, we need to build that political power and direct the frustration that we feel toward the proper places, right? Right now, there's so many people fighting within community, and we got, uh, you know, the grant process really divides people. But the fight is not this way, as AOC says, it's, it's this way. So we gotta take this political movement and bring it to the halls of Olympia, to the business centers. We gotta tax Amazon. We gotta, uh, tax the wealthiest in, in our region and really redistribute that wealth to where it needs to go in order to become the progressive city that we talk about.
Wow, I mean, I think, you know, this is a unique time. I mean, you know, we just had this, uh, you know, District Three, which is a central district, city council election, you know? Just this, uh, where we have, you know, the wealthiest, right? You know, the big corporate, you know, downtowns, associations, and Chamber of Commerce, you know? Rallying, putting all, basically striving to buy the election.
Yep.
But they were not able to do it.
Ah, that's beautiful, man.
You know, I mean, based on the counts, as we see him now in the trends, uh, Shama Sowan is gonna, is gonna, uh, prevail and remain the council person. And these are the, you know, some of the policies that she has been, uh, advocating. So I think there's a, this is a special time for more people to, to get in and understand that the people, yeah, money has power. But really, the money does come from the people, you know, and whoever, you know? So if the people are better, uh, organized and really expressing their voice.
Yep.
We can see a lot, a lot more change. So I appreciate that you're bringing that, you know, perspective to your, to your, to your office.
Um, absolutely.
From your perspective, you know, to that point, what can people do, you know, besides, you know, share on Facebook? Like, how can people really get involved in moving the needle on critical issues?
So for me, I, I see my job as bringing people to the table. I don't, I don't, I don't blame people for being disenfranchised, for being marginalized. Because if you're working a full-time job and taking care of kids in a system that's not set up for you to thrive, it's hard to be politically engaged too. So we have to make sure that we're doing all we can to come to community, to hold office hours, to collect these email addresses and phone numbers, and call people and, and talk about the things they care about. Because people show up when you talk about the things that they care about. So when I am, uh, using Instagram to let, ask the youth, what, what inspires you? What would physically motivate you to action? And they're telling me that, and I'm collecting their addresses. And I will personally target my outreach to them based on the things that they care about. So those are some of the things that we can do to just bring people in.
Man, that sounds like, uh, folks better get ready to, you know, get busy, right? You know, we can't leave it up. You know, there is no one coming to save us. You know, we, we have the power to save ourselves. Um, and so, um, but, you know, you can help create space and, and that's, that's a valuable thing. You mentioned, uh, uh, the work of Africa Town a few times.
Yep.
You know, what are your thoughts about, um, where, you know, Africa Town, you know, fits into the future of, you know, the central district, Seattle? District Two, Martin Luther King County, like, where, where, what does that look like for you, the vision, an asset-based, uh, uh, community development vision? To really bring the, the, the best of the black experience into space and have space for it to grow and develop?
Yeah, Africa Town can't just be, uh, a stamp of validation for developers and these other organizations that are building, right? If we're truly about racial equity, Africa Town needs to be leading in these efforts, and we need to get out of the way of that and provide the resources for you to do that. You know, we, you and I emailed back and forth about that project that's happening across the street from Bailey Gatz, or like, we need to have you leading that and not just be, uh, you know, cultural, uh, accessory.
Yeah, 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 they want you to do, be, do, you know, do liaison, do public relations work. It's like, nah, we, you know, we have a, a development framework that, that prioritizes, you know, you know, equitable development. It starts with ownership.
Yep.
Right? Cause that's equity.
Absolutely.
In this, you know, um, economic and political system, so.
So the vision is to get these sites, these surplus lands that I was talking about before, and put pressure on these government agencies and these developers to release that land. Whether, I mean, if you wanna sell it for a dollar or whatever, but at the end of the day, that land is best used in the hands of community to build affordable housing, to promote homeownership with, through community land trusts. And so I see Africa Town as a huge partner for achieving racial equity and promoting black wealth.
Right. The question is, what is Seattle gonna be, right? Is it gonna be, you know, like apartheid city situation? Or is it gonna be this place that is a model of how to, you know, develop and move into the future without displacing, you know, communities? A lot of hard problems that have been solved here. So, um, I think that's one that, that, that can be solved. And we look forward to, uh, uh, working with, you know, the county, uh, to move that, move that forward and bringing more people again into, uh, the process.
That's it.
To influence the process.
That's the only way change is gonna happen.
That, that influences, uh, influences, um, us, you know, and our lives, you know? Um, one of the other things is that, you know, a lot of our community has been displaced, right? And into, you know, into the county, you know, there's just this national trend of suburbanization of poverty, they call it, right?
Right.
And so as we're moving out, there's less resources, right? And so being that you're on the county council, what thoughts have you put around? How do we, you know, how, how do we, um, address that, those circumstances that are, those trends? You know, our community is out there.
Yep.
Um, they have needs that have not been met in Seattle, and there's less resources in a sense to, to, to meet them in the places that they're going.
We have a constant battle between investment and displacement, right? You wanna invest in communities, you wanna build housing, you wanna build affordable housing. Uh, but you don't wanna, you don't want that in, level of investment to just push people out through property taxes, through speculative real estate investment, through people who wouldn't otherwise look at a community, but now because it looks better, now they're interested and now they're coming in. So with, with that push and pull, the things that we can do are, one, uh, root people through ownership. So put, promote homeownership through low-interest loans, through community land trusts, through, uh, favorable interest rate, interest rate grants for existing communities. You need to put in place strong anti-displacement measures, inclusionary zoning policies, write a first return. So if, if you're displacing somebody's business to build, they have the first right to come back and lease that space after that development is done. Um, we can also have, uh, one-for-one policies where the number the developer commits to building back the exact number of units that they took down in the process of building, affordable units that they took down. So, uh, and then we need public ownership as well. So these are some of the ways that we can make sure that as we invest, we don't continue to push people out.
One of the things you mentioned on the, on the campaign trail was about really taking the, the, the profit motive out of the financing.
Yeah.
So you talked about a municipal bank.
Yep.
You know, can you, you know, speak to that and how that could be a solution that people should really be looking at to, to advocate for?
Yeah, so right now, the county, the state, the city use Wells Fargo and other multinational banks to house their money.
That don't give us loans.
That don't give us loans, that we, every, every dollar that you're taxed, some amount of that is going to the stake shareholders of a multinational corporation that's not really thinking about you or your interests. So we need a public bank to house our money, so that, one, we're using our money more efficiently, we're not paying Wells Fargo for every dollar that you're taxed. Two, uh, this public bank has a social good element to it, and that's how it measures success. So we can give low-interest loans, we can capitalize and, 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 and build affordable housing at lower rates. Uh, we can lend money to other municipalities and counties and gain interest on that money back. So it's a, uh, you know, a closed-loop circulation of economics within community to do good. And there are some people who say that this is not possible, this is not a good thing, we need big financial institutions managing money. But you go to North Dakota, they got a public bank out there that's giving them seventeen percent returns every year compared to six or seven percent with the multinational ba- banks we're using now. And now we got a second model for that, cause California just passed a bill last month where the state says, okay, cities and counties in California can now form their own public bank. So we need to put pressure on our state to give us the same kind of rights, so that King County can form its own public bank. And then we can give loans more easily, we can use, uh, social good as a metric for success of the bank rather than increased money for shareholders.
Man, that's, yeah, research, you know, uh, municipal banks.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we talked about the income equality, there's been a lot of, uh, conversation about wealth inequality. Um, and, you know, I, you know, I think there was a thing that came out that said it would take two hundred and twenty-eight years for, you know, the average black family to catch up with the average white family in terms of wealth. And basically, we can just look at that number as basically the, the time that we were, uh, in, in shadow slavery, enslaved. And our labor capital was enriching someone else, right? And so the only way to really get to any degree of equity is to have some redistribution
Right.
of those resources.
Right.
Because they are benefiting someone else, right? And they did benefit someone else. And the thing about our system is compounding interest. It either works for you.
Yep.
Or it works against you.
Right.
And right now, our own, you know, capital is working against us.
Right.
What are your thoughts about how, you know, reparations specifically for, you know, those who have endured? For example, in the central district, you know, there were specific policies, you know, redlining, et cetera, et cetera. And actually HB nineteen eighteen was just passed in the, in the state legislature. It admits that government and, you know, private policies and practices literally disenfranchised black communities. So what do you think about, you know, the reparations? How can restoration happen? We talked about restorative justice, you know? What are your thoughts about specific policies to, to, to bridge that gap?
I'm all in favor of reparations, absolutely. Um, you know, at the federal level, of course, for the wrongs done by our country, for slavery, Jim Crow, mass incarceration. But people don't really think about the local level like that, right? There's a national dialogue going on, but locally, economic redlining, uh, discriminatory lending practices, uh, mass incarceration at the local level. All of those things play a role in removing wealth from the black community. And so, uh, if we can find a progressive source of taxation to give the people impacted by that reparations or credits.
Or even credits, right?
Yeah.
Cause we are still being taxed, right?
Yeah, so tax credit.
We're still paying into systems that are, you know, not only, that are disenfranchising us.
Yep.
So, you know, how, how do we have a package that, you know, allows us to open businesses?
Yeah.
And there's some waiver, you know, just even on, on taxes and things like that.
Yeah, that, that's, equity demands that. So if we're talking about tax exemptions, start with the African-American community and other communities that were directly impacted by these policies. If we're, uh, giving loans for homeownership, begin with the black community and African-American communities who were impacted by these policies. Um, these are, you know, if you go to California, even, uh, cannabis justice, that's something that we haven't done here yet. So if on Twenty-third and, uh, and Union, we have Uncle Ike's benefiting from marijuana on the same corner that black people for decades were arrested and put in jail for the same drug. But we haven't prioritized marijuana licenses for the people who have been impacted, that, that's not equity. So we need to demand at the state level that we have cannabis justice and, uh, you know, the, what is it? Ninety-eight percent of the licensing owners are white. Um, but who was impacted?
It's been perpetuated still. And a lot of times, people are like, "Oh, well, my ancestors weren't here," or "They didn't do that," or, you know, "They came at this time." But these things happen in a real time.
Yep.
That are derived from.
Yep.
And continue to perpetuate those inequities. And we can, and we, everyone can do something, and everyone has to take a side, right?
Absolutely.
Are you for justice or, or not, right?
Yep.
Well, we're glad to know that, you know, that you're, you're coming in with, with, with a lens for, for justice and equity and making, you know, this county, this city, this district, you know, uh, a, a, a model for what could happen in other places. And at the minimum, a place of struggle for that, for that model in future, you know? Cause we know nothing, you know, what, nothing's gonna come, uh, without, without struggle. And so, uh, it's great that you're, you know, uh, calling the people in.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, providing opportunities for people to, to learn those skills.
Yes, sir.
And build those muscles, you know? Because it can have a great implication on our, on the, on the, on the, the, not only the community locally, but nationally and, and globally. So, um, with that said, you know, we wanna understand a little bit about, you know, how you, you know, um, you know, some of the inputs that have contributed to the output that we're seeing from, from yourself, you know, your brilliance. What are, uh, three books that have, you know, put light on your path or profoundly affected the way, the way you move in this world?
Yeah, I, it has to begin with The New Jim Crow. I mean, that's the one that I think every single policymaker in America needs to read. Because the way Michelle Alexander is able to draw a straight line from slavery to Jim Crow to mass incarceration and all of those being forms of social control and how that impla- impacts black wealth and, uh, educational attainment. And every single other metric really that you can think about. And she paints it in such a clear and convincing way that I think it's important for everybody to read that book. Um, Another Book, Probably Evicted, have you heard of Evicted by Matthew Desmond?
I'm not familiar with that.
It's a great book where, um, this sociologist goes to black communities in Milwaukee and writes about his experience watching black families get evicted. And especially in the times that we're living here in Seattle and South King County, we're seeing those same forces, black families being evicted, pushed out. And he talks about how having a stable home is the foundation for all well-being. So you can't really, it's working backwards if you start at. So you can't really, it's working backwards if you start at, you know, the education level or the criminal legal level or the public health level. People don't have a stable place to call home, you don't have a foundation to build anything else. So he recommends expanding voucher programs. He recommends getting rid of voucher discrimination, cause that's what's happening with Section Eight vouchers right now. He recommends rent control. He recommends community land trusts like y'all are doing. Uh, so it's just a great policy book for housing. There's a book that I just started right now that's really interesting. Have you heard of a book called White Rage? I just, I just started that one, so I haven't gotten through it yet. But it talks about how at every milestone that we've seen for black communities in the United States, there's been a, a backlash of white response to that, uh, to that progress. And that informs a lot of the uh, state that we're in right now, whether that's, you know, post-Civil War reconstruction. Whether that's right after the Civil Rights Movement and getting the Civil Rights Bill and the backlash to that. And then she ends with the election of Barack Obama and the backlash to that. And we clearly see that many of the uh, social dynamics we're having right now are in response to that, you know, the Tea Party Movement. Trump selection. Uh, there's always a backlash. And so if we see historically that there's always that backlash, it allows us to prepare better for it. So at every milestone, at every win, at every step that we gain in progress, we have to be, be prepared for the backlash.
That's very insightful to where, you know, you coming in with all these, you know, powerful ideas. Um, and, and I think what you're saying is that, um, um, the same people that are saying, you know, I'm not my ancestors, become their ancestors, just in a new, maybe more sophisticated way, right? And to, you know, enforce that same uh, system of, of, of oppression on us. In, in real ti- oh, and I'll, I'll, I'll add one and maybe you read this book. I think it really goes hand in hand with uh, Jim Crow, but The Color of Wealth. That one talks about how the housing policy from the federal government level, you know, consistently has uh, uh, disenfranchised, deprived um, uh, blacks of wealth to that system, right? From the federal, you know, uh, uh, GI Bill and the housing, you know, just on all the way up to, you know, through predatory uh, lending. So that's a good one I, I, I'd, I'd share with you. In real time, uh, who are some of your, um, I guess, you know, living uh, inspirations or models, who, whose pathways and footsteps you look to for inspiration?
Man, I look to all the other leaders who are doing the work in the community, you and Don Mason. Don, Don Mason has been a great mentor to me, uh, just sharing the history and, and the work that she's done. I really, really admire Nikita Oliver's uh, mayoral campaign and the movement that the Seattle People's Party were able to build. And even if that election wasn't successful, the whole dialogue has changed around movement building. And how you're supposed to let communities lead in, in many of the causes that we're, we're fighting for. Let's see. You don't have to look too far. There are so many people doing great work out here for, for us to uh, to support and to uh, lean on. So that's, yeah.
Any good uh, podcasts, blogs, uh, YouTube channels that, you know, help keep you on your toes?
Uh, I just heard one of my good friends has, has a podcast called Depth and Candor where she interviews uh, young black and brown people who are pursuing their dreams. And so if people want to look that up, it's just a great way to. You hear specific stories about how people went from, you know, doing a job that they find no passion in to one where they really getting uh, motivated by and inspired by and are excited to wake up and do. And all of that began with a leap of faith of some sort. Like, they didn't see the full staircase, but they still took the first step. And so that, that's a, just a, a great podcast. Yeah, I have been on it.
You left Franklin and then you went.
Yep, yep, to college. I was at Stanford down in California. Um, man, it was different. It was my first.
Path that you chose?
Yeah, so, um, just going to law school and uh, even coming back to Seattle after law school was, was a, a leap of faith too. By, you know, I, I was living in New York in Harlem. Uh, I had started a nonprofit to mentor and give workshops for underserved youth in Harlem. Um, but then I, I talked about the injury that my mom suffered on her knees, uh, doing the kind of work that she was doing. And so I was like, oh man, I gotta be close to my family. I want to work in the community where I was raised. So I felt my heartstrings pulling at me, but I didn't have a, you know, direct plan for that. You know, once, if you're somebody who went to law school your whole life, the steps before were very concrete and tangible steps, right? You finish high school to get into college, you do the internship to get it to the next thing. You get to grad school, you have the first job lined up. And then suddenly it's like, oh man, you gotta shape your own destiny moving forward. So you really have to reflect, look internally about the things that motivate you and keep you breathing and excited. And for me, that was supporting my family and uh, supporting the community that I was raised in. So that's what really moved back, but it started with that leap of faith.
What are three steps for someone striving to get into electoral politics and, 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 and run for office that you would recommend?
Man, this is such a good question because even when I was thinking about running, I would go on YouTube and search like, how do I run for office? And then a bunch of videos would show up to tell you why you should run for office or when you think you're gonna be prepared. But that wasn't my question. My question was how? Like, what are the concrete steps? And there aren't a lot of resources for that. So I'm actually working on a video right now to uh, to show people in, in our demographic. This is how you actually concretely do it specifically here in King County in Seattle. So I'll be releasing that sometime later this year. Uh, but the first step I would do, you gotta talk to a political consultant because they are just a wealth of knowledge. They do this professionally. And for a first consultation meeting, they're not gonna charge you. Um, and there are a bunch out there, you know, Real Johnson does this, CD Strategic, Julius Caesar Robinson does this. So there's just a lot of organizations that do that. If you just Google Seattle political consultant, that'll come up. Have a consultation meeting with them and they'll tell you everything you need to know. Step two, you should identify who you trust enough to be your campaign manager, your field director. Um, and that way you can actually have a team set up. And then number three, you gotta identify your fundraising bases. So uh, go through your phone, make a spreadsheet and see how much you're gonna ask each person. And uh, don't list how much you think they'll give you. List twice as much as that so that you can actually make the ask. Uh, because campaigns cost money, man. It's uh, that was the hardest part. So there's three steps.
That's great. Make sure you get us that video. Distribute that, you know, through the Africatown Media Network because we, we ought to come into these next elections. We gotta get our weight. People could see, he, he's done it, right? So let's get more inspired, motivated, and we can get behind you, um, to represent us, uh, the right way. So man, I, I appreciate you uh, co- coming, uh, councilmen.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I know you have a lot of proud people behind you.
Thank you, man.
We look forward to this not being the last time that you, that you come in and, and, and talk to the people, right? Let them know what's going on. Keep updated, like you said. Um, so with that, we're gonna bring our session to an end. And as we always say about this time, tap in, don't tap out.